We started the recording Patty.
Thank you. Who's here?
Um, Councilor Bajenko. Hold on.
Start with the commissioners.
Commissioner Banko. Commissioner Sario. Commissioner Trombetta. And I don't see Commissioner.
And I'm on the phone.
Yeah, and we have you and we have uh, uh, Counselor Bajenko and Counselor Page.
Okay, yes, and um, alright, so we have quorum of the camp of the commissioners.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to water and it is six thirty-eight. And we did roll call.
Yep.
And would you stand and say the pledge as best you can? A pledge of allegiance. To the flag. Of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible. And mighty and good. We got it?
Bring up the minutes if you can.
Cause I'm not hearing anybody talking.
Oh, can you hear me Patty?
I can hear you Rob.
Alright, everybody else I believe is muted at this point.
Thank you, okay, just so, cause without my visual it makes a little thing.
Understood.
Okay, can I get? Alright, so we're ready to do number four?
Yeah.
I gotta, you gotta take care of moving the slides. Or let me know when you move them, thank you.
Yeah, we have, Jose's gotta bring up, just bring up, Jose's bringing up the minutes, give him one second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the meetings are, uh, the minutes, the minutes are up.
Okay, can I have a? Motion. Accept the minutes. As presented. And the second.
This is Commissioner Sario, I make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Okay, so we got Karen who's second.
I'll second it.
Thanks Joe. Okay, do we have any corrections or anything that we need to add or fix? Is that, who, who, who is speaking?
Uh, I think someone's got their mic on. Alright, we're all set.
Oh, okay, so do we have any changes to the motion?
Nope, I don't hear any changes.
Okay, um, do we all vote unanimously? We gotta hear everybody's voice. I do.
I vote. Yes.
Go. Okay.
Yes, Commissioner Sario.
Thank you Commissioner Sario. Commissioner Banko?
No, she's not. Can we get a vote, Commissioner Banko? On the minutes?
Can you hear me Aggie, yes?
Okay, there we go, got it.
Thank you Commissioner Banko, I appreciate that. Oh, you sound so much clearer, perfect, and but, okay, so it was unanimous. Perfect, thank you so much everyone. Uh, do we have any um, changes? To the agenda, I know we need to add to our new business will be the ball committee. I have, I remembered that after being reminded, thank you. Any other changes that we need to add or change in the minute? Uh, excuse me, to the agenda?
The only, uh, the only correction Patty is on, at the bottom, we put next meeting is May twelfth inadvertently, the next meeting is actually um, June uh, nine. Yeah.
What was, what was, what was the date saying?
Uh, June ninth.
Thank you, guys, I forgot to fix that one. Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, other than that, we can move ahead, yes? Okay, do we have anybody showing up in the public?
No public yet.
No public yet, okay, we're moving along, fast and furious. Okay, to all business, I have nothing to report on sustainable. Uh, Connecticut right now. Um, they're doing lots of stuff, I'll, I'll continue to send out updates on things that you might be interested in and go from there.
Good, thanks Jose.
Okay, she gotta talk into her phone, cause I haven't heard, I'm getting like this big echo.
Who's, somebody's gotta open mic. Yeah, near them. Yeah.
There we go, okay, this is Commissioner Sario about the Facebook page, I think.
Alright, we're not there yet, anything more on sustainable Connecticut, that's okay. Nothing, good, okay, I just wanna make sure I didn't gave everybody a chance to speak. Uh, Commissioner Sario, go for it.
Okay, well, you could see the numbers uh, here for um, the business page were at a hundred and ninety followers and the group page were at two hundred and thirty-seven um, members. It seems to be um, pretty stagnant, um, there's a few members each month, but it's um, about the same. So Patty and I um, come up with some ideas and I want to share them with you and ask your opinion and um, ask your ideas. What I was going to do is starting this week, uh, for ten weeks, so probably through the end of July, uh, to have a consistent post every Tuesday and Thursday around six PM. Uh, the Tuesday post, I was gonna post uh, examples of what's in, what's out. And then the Thursday post, I was gonna post uh, town news such as um, anything relating to the landfill, recycling, uh, more news about upcycle, hazardous waste collection, the mattress, um, leaves shredding events, um, things of that nature. Um, and then um, on Thursday, I will share our town news on the litter free page to the uh, Newington Facebook group pages as well. Probably about once, oh, yeah, what, that'll be once a week. Um, and then if, if there's no town topic, uh, you know, fifty-two weeks of, um, I need fifty-two examples, so um, I'm gonna start again with just ten though, I'm gonna start from uh, May to July. Uh, if I can't get an example, then I'll go to um, the um, the state page. E, uh, D, D E E P for example, for, for more information. Um, but I'm gonna do this for about ten weeks and see if we can get more participation. What does everybody think?
Okay, so I'm gonna ask everybody else, um, so Commissioner Banko or Commissioner Trombetta, what do you think, just? Obviously, I spoke with Ca- uh, Commissioner Sario.
Uh, I agree.
I think um. Can you hear me Patty?
Yes, we can hear you.
We can hear.
Yeah, it, it sounds good, it sounds like a, yeah, a well thought out plan.
Great, alright, thank you everybody for your feedback. Um, Rob, I, I will need town information from you. Uh, I, I can dig a lot and get a lot of the information off the website, but certainly, um, if there's anything you can do, um, perhaps I can call you um, next week. Um, during the workday, um, and, and, and ask um, if you have a calendar or any uh, plans, at least, like I said, just to get started with the next ten weeks. Um, to see if that will help engagement, um.
Yeah, we can, you can certainly do that, if you wanna uh, reach out to me on Monday and then we can up one or two, maybe three ideas, maybe more, we'll see. And I mean, if you wanna just kind of make it on a Monday type thing to give us a couple idea, a couple uh, days before we post on Thursday. Um, we'll see what we can drum up this uh, starting Monday.
Great, wonderful, thank you, thank you.
You bet.
The, the other thing I wanted to add is about our environmental quality commission monthly meeting, so I was gonna post that as well. I chose Tuesdays and Thursdays since, since there's um, that, that seems to be the most engagement from what I can assess um, on Facebook, um, those evenings at six PM. Obviously, um, I'm not gonna post on a Thursday at six for a six thirty meeting. Um, do you think I should post the week before our meeting? The Thursday before? Or the Tuesday?
I don't, I don't think that would be a bad idea, the Thursday before the week in advance. And then, um, I will go to the pages once you post up. And then like put some comments and so forth to bring it back up.
Great, great. Alright, so I'll do it the week before then, alright, and if everybody can kind of, go ahead. If, if everybody can post, um, I'm sorry, if everybody that is on Facebook can check Facebook around six PM on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And just get in the habit of Tuesdays and Thursdays, and if you could just even like it, i- i- you know, and if there's something you wanna say, you know, that's always appreciated, whenever you comment and like, it does increase the possibility that other people are gonna see it on, on their page.
Correct.
Wonderful.
And, and you don't have to actually do it on Tuesday and Thursday, so let's say you go there on Wednesday. It puts another day on a calendar that will help bring it up again. So, you know, that always helps to um, go back on the next day and say, oh yeah, this is good or make a comment.
Great, yeah.
Cause the more chances we, we receive, um, a comment, comments are the most valuable thing we can have. Likes are nice, becoming a friend is nice, but a comment is worth more. You might say Facebook gold. Because we're engaging the public, which is what they're supposed to do. Karen, this sounds really good, I like the idea.
Great, great, wonderful, well, thank you everybody for your ideas as well, and uh, like I said, if you're able to uh, engage as you can throughout the week, you know, uh, it doesn't have to be like, like uh, Commissioner Foley said, it doesn't have to be six PM on Tuesdays and Thursdays, but maybe just even once a week, if you could go to the litter free page and comment, um, that will certainly help. Between us uh, all participating, you know, we should be able to make an impact and um, and educate the town at the same time and have some fun. Thank you everybody.
And, and thank you Commissioner Sario, that's super. Um, and let's also remember if we're involved on working, cause we'll talk about events later. Any type of information you have, send it to Karen, uh, Commissioner Sario, um, and that, we can stick those in anytime. But we're gonna be consistent, uh, apparently, we're looking at being consistent twice a week. So if there's something that would be good to help us on an event. Those are, those are, those are super also. Alrighty, alright, so now we are down to letter C, positions open on commission. Okay, uh, at the town council meeting. Two weeks ago in change, um, the town council approved the changes and removed the definitions for industry people. And we now have six, uh, six, excuse me, seven members to the commission and the seven members. Um, will all be general public members. So um, we got an update, now that was, uh, hold on, I gotta look at my extra notes. So fifteen days from now, so we're looking like the middle of June. Uh, give or take, uh, after the approval goes, um, they have to issue a. Legal notice in the newspaper. And then. After that, the um. Uh, change in the, uh, in our format will go into effect. So while it's passed right now, we're still waiting the, the legal time to elapse and then we are fine, so. Uh, we will have that and that will open up our, ourselves for two additional public members, which would be really great to have. Uh, and, and nothing, oh, and the only other thing is, um, we haven't heard from one of the, the newest member. But she ended up taking a new job and she's going to school night. So she, she's thinking she doesn't have time for this right now. Um, I got a email from her earlier today. So um.
Who is that Patty?
Her name is Jean Natt.
Okay.
She had just gotten appointed, but um, whole bunch of things changed in her life and. Um, I, I'm gonna wish her good luck and if she sees her, her um. Schedule will changes again, we'll invite her back on. So anybody who has um, thinks or hears of someone, um, if they're not invi- um, they're not a member of. Um, a political party in town, tell them to send their interest to the town manager's office. That they're interested in might should get appointed to our committee. And that's all I have there. Okay. And, and Jean has not formally resigned, but she's not here and we still would need four people. That's, that, the incident would be, we need four people at all times for a quorum. Okay? I'm sorry, I can't hear the person speaking.
That's background noise on somebody's mic, we're fixing that Patty.
Okay.
All set.
Will you, Rob, you're, you're clear with it though.
Alright, are we all set with C, we can move on to D Patty?
Letter D. Uh, letter pickup, citizen group, Commissioner Sario, any news?
I have no update unfortunately at this time.
Okay, we're mov- we're moving ahead. Uh, letter E, um, I'm sure we have some great news from Commissioner Banko regarding the upscaling contest. Yes? You can hear me? Go ahead Commissioner Banko.
Um, unfortunately, I'm having some technical difficulties with my computer, so I'll just have to um, do the audio. Um, the upcycling contest um, has begun and I'm already receiving applications as well as photos. The contest deadline is June first for submitting applications and the photos must be in by June twelfth. So everything is going according to plan and um, everything looks a-okay.
Congratulations.
I had, I don't have a, um. I don't have a um, date yet for the award ceremony because of COVID. Hopefully, you know, the um, the COVID rate hasn't been pretty high. And hopefully, it will drop and, you know, so I'm thinking maybe the award ceremony might be August. It might be, I don't know, late August, if, if the COVID rate keeps going down, it'll probably. Be sometime middle to late August. If it, if the COVID rate is already down, you know, like two or three percent, then maybe beginning of August, but so. I know, I, I just don't ha- I haven't set a date yet and um, I'm gonna have to coordinate that with James.
That's fine, I think that, that's being very wise at this point.
So that's all I have.
Okay, congratulations, that's fabulous, you got people sending stuff in, excellent. Okay, uh, school pi- poster and essay contest, um, I'm gonna be pulling out my school poster. Requirements. And uh, to speak with um. The superintendent to make sure we can get in there in September and just to get a feel and get what, you know, what's gonna be important there. Obviously, again, we're looking at, do we have real posters or virtual posters? Like we did when COVID first started. And uh, the essay contest will work off of what we do for the posters to be similar and I'll send that around, everybody can put their two cents. On the essay contest rules, I'd like to get your feedback, so I hope to have that done and. Now that we have the next, the next meeting day, this better. And that's all I have there. Extravaganza, well, that is. Um, I have a application to get a booth. Uh, I didn't send it in yet. But then, um, I'm really wondering, do we want to expose ourselves? Uh, we only have a few of us and I know myself, I'm very limited in what I can do in public at this point still. Do we wanna, I mean, we wanna be there or? This is a tough call. I'd like your feedback.
Well, exactly what are you planning if we do have a booth?
Well, we do have um, general information. About what's in, what's not in, we can put that up, we have. Um, because that's gonna be July, we would have maybe some more in- information just on the upcycling. I know the contest will be over, but we, we can um, make some, no, posters and information.
I think we should just do extravaganza or waterfall, one or the other, I, I don't think we should do both and I, I'm voting for waterfall.
Hang on one second, I gotta start this, stop this audio. I don't know how to stop the video. Unmute, start video. I don't know what the hell's on my. Clumsy. Leave this. That's the wrong thing over here, okay, go ahead. I pressed the wrong thing, are we, am I still connected?
Yes, you're still there.
Yes.
I, I agree with you Commissioner Banko, I, I, I think, given that there's so few of us, I think we, we should pick one or the other. Um, and, you know, we may not be able to be at the whole event, you know, maybe just pick a, an hour or two, um, something of that nature, um.
So if you were to pick, let's take a little poll quick. Just, just a voice, whatever. Who wants extravaganza or who wants waterfall?
I want waterfall.
Okay, Commissioner Banko wants waterfall. Can't hurt my feelings, I just wanna know what we wanna consider.
I say waterfall.
Yeah, Commissioner Trombetta?
I think waterfall.
Okay. Commissioner Sario?
I would agree the same.
Okay, so I, extravaganza, we're gonna take off. Our event schedule. That's what I'm hearing. Okay, that's what we'll do, we'll do that and, and focus on the waterfall festival, which is usually the last Saturday of. Uh, September, okay, so we're gonna just, okay, take water, extravaganza's off. Um, and then we'll, we'll, we'll come up with that, perfect, okay, excellent, thank you. Now, um. Uh, damnation. Mister Hellman.
Uh, right, um, so.
You got a lot of stuff, because if I keep finding stuff on the, have to go to a town council meeting, I'm, I'm like, this is not good that we could be worrying about.
Yeah. Yep, um, the only things that I have to report on right now, um, are uh, we had our hazardous waste collection, um. Uh, April thirtieth and we had um. A lot of participants, as we always do, we had over five hundred and fifty cars that day. Um, we are always the first uh, collection of the season, so it's always the biggest. And then um, our mattress collection, we collected over a hundred and sixty-three mattresses, or recycled. Over a hundred and sixty-three mattresses last uh, last month, uh, taking over uh, seventy-five hundred pounds out of the waste stream. So that continues to be a success for us.
Wait, you said seven thousand five hundred?
Seven thou- that, seven thousand five hundred pounds. It was a hundred.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I meant, okay, I wanted to be sure.
Yep.
I was gonna say, how, no, everybody turned in their mattress in town. Sorry, keep going, keep going, Bob.
And it, it was a hundred and sixty-three mattresses and box springs.
Okay, yeah.
So.
Can I um, just interrupt for a minute, um, I just got, Patty, you'll appreciate this, um. They're having a special NCTV meeting tonight and they don't have quorum, so they asked if I could jump over there, so I'm gonna have to sign out here, if that's okay?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I know, cause I have to jump in too.
Okay, so anyways, the only thing I was gonna say, the only thing I was gonna say about the town council was that, you know, we approved the um, the change in membership, so um, anyways.
I wanna say thank, thank you, um, to, um, is uh, um, Mitch still in here?
No, I think he had to leave for a concert.
No, I think he had to leave for a concert for his son.
I know, so please mark that he was only here for about fifteen minutes, which is okay because he 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 had told me he had a, his last, it's the last concert for his son who's a senior at the high school.
Right.
And the these are important family events that, you know, mom and dad should be at.
Okay, um thank you, everybody. See you next month.
And tell him I'll be in there in a second. I got um I I'm gonna put, put me on mute or somebody will put me on mute. Um let's see, Commissioner um Sario. Uh oh, excuse me, anything more, uh Mr. Hellman?
That's all I have for this evening.
All right, so I would like to have one item. Oh God, I would like to ask, ask you just if you would submit to us each time you send it in. But you know your sanitation report? That you send into the town manager?
Uh I send in the monthly report, which on the bottom has the sanitation numbers, yes.
Could you send that report out whenever it's ready and send it to the commissioners? So they can start getting accustomed to seeing some of the things that are actually involved in what it takes to get garbage out of Newington.
Yeah, it's uh it's actually uh due the second Friday of every month, so I usually have it done for the day of the meeting because it's 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 actually due tomorrow. So I usually have those numbers, so I can, I can send those out.
Yeah, and then when it's done, whatever, whatever your report is, if you can just copy it to the commissioners, then they'll start to get an idea of understanding um waste waste management or however you wanna call it in the town. Cause I always read them. I don't think everybody else does. But if they either can get a copy attached or a link to, well, the link won't work because it takes a while before it gets up there, but they can get a copy of it. They can start seeing the stuff that you are actually um have to deal with.
Yeah.
And get a little better understanding. Excellent. I really, that would be a great help. Okay. Uh Commissioner Educational reducing views. Oh, that's it, okay. TM report. Super, I really would, would, I think that would be a really great way to whet everybody's appetite in some way. Thank you. Anything more?
No, that's it.
Mr. Hellman. Thank you very much. Okey dokey.
That is a lot. That is a lot. Excellent.
It's amazing. And when you start reading his report on a regular basis, you'll really start to get a better feeling. And I think it's gonna help us with our Facebook page. It's gonna help us from all of us adding items that we as the the quality commission and our charge being not just only sustainable CT, but it will also be the fact of, well, wait a minute, how about this, that, and the other thing, so. I, you know, anything that feeds the imagination. Uh all right, moving on. New business. Commissioner Bunkel, I'd like, I don't have anything under A. So Commissioner Bunkel, would you discuss the Boff thing?
Yes, can you hear me?
Hear you loud and clear.
Okay. Just some background information regarding on the Boff Quarry. At the last meeting, which was in the fall, I brought up the question about monitoring the air quality near the quarry because there's no data regarding the air quality around the quarry. There's data regarding air quality in the quarry but not outside neighborhoods. So um Barbara Giotti from the health department said she would look into setting up air monitors in the neighborhoods near the quarry, probably midsummer. So the quarry doesn't operate middle of the winter. But I believe they they started up, if I'm not mistaken, maybe like March or April, I think they started operating. Anyway, so I emailed Barbara just, you know, tossing it out there as to um when the air monitoring might begin. She has, it, that was about, I don't know, eight, nine days ago. She hasn't answered me as yet. So I'll follow up with another email or whatever in in another week or two. And um once the air monitors are up and running, I'm going to um start to look at where they are, et cetera, et cetera. And I hope to, you know, discuss the um data once it's in. I'm not sure how long it will be monitored, how long the air quality will be monitored. I'm hoping probably, I know, two, three, four weeks. But um yeah, so what, once we get some data and hopefully it shows that the air quality is good. If it shows the air quality is bad and it was, and it contains a lot of particulates and silicone probably from the quarry, well, putting it nicely, it could open up a whole can of worms. But the neighbors
That's, that is the reason we do this, correct?
Exactly, exactly. And if it shows poor air quality, I mean, do you want children? Do you want adults? Do you want silicon clotheslines and clothes? So hopefully it will show that the air quality is good and not bad. So anyway, I hope to report back about this probably, I don't know, July or August. But anyway, that, that, that's just the background information and what the plans are for moving forward.
Okay. When is the Boff, the actual Boff meeting?
Generally, that's in September. So
September, okay, then we'll hear about this later on in this, throughout the summer.
Well, generally, um I think, I think Barbara said, you know, it would be midsummer, which if it was midsummer and we gather that data, that would be good because then it could be brought up at the September meeting of Boff, at the Boff Quarry meeting in September.
Okay, excellent, excellent. Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Bunkel. Uh let's see, uh any, any other comments on that issue just from either Commissioner Sario or Commissioner Trumbetta?
This is Commissioner Sario. I wanted to say thank you, Joyce. Thank you, Commissioner Bunkel, for following up on that and making sure that we have the facts and that um we understand what they're doing, for how long, uh and keeping them accountable. So I I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you, thank you too. Thank you too.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, um we're looking at pub- public participation. Do we have anybody in the room?
Nobody's in the room.
Okey dokey. Uh Commissioner comments. Does anybody have anything more they wanna say? Uh I don't hear anything more. Going to number twelve. Uh Rob, anything more? Uh Rob, Mr. Hellman, sorry.
That's okay. No, I don't have anything li- anything else for the evening.
Okay, and both our liaisons had took off. So hopefully we'll hear from them next month. Our next meeting will be June 9th at 6:30 PM. Um it looks like we're gonna be sticking to Zoom for a little while, but we'll find out. Um because I know they made changes to the town council meetings um to move from a hybrid method to all Zoom at this moment or or semi-hybrid. Um but we'll find out as um as the COVID, uh what do you call it? Happens, because right now, like we said earlier, tonight, the numbers have gotten really high again. Or at least for our area. Is there anything more we have to say?
This is Commissioner Sario. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew the waterfall festival date is September 24th. If you want to make, make sure that's on your calendar, please save the date so that we can
I'm writing it right now.
We can all participate. And I believe it's from 11 to 1:00. I'm not sure if that's accurate, but um it's a short time.
Yeah, we can figure that out a little later. That's fine.
Great, thank you.
Cause it actually, that artists begin at 6:00 AM. So there's a certain time you have to have setup done. So we'll figure out what we're gonna do or how we're gonna do it. Excellent, okay. If we have nothing else than adjournment, to have a
Make a motion, adjourn.
Thank you, Commissioner Bunkel. Do I have a second?
I'll second. This is Commissioner Sario.
Sario, okay, thank you. And are we on the paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're unanimous and we close the meeting at 7:19. God, we got a lot done. I wanna really say thanks so much.
Have a good evening, everybody.
Good evening. And if there's anything that we need, make sure that you get in touch with me and let me know if I gotta follow up with anybody or you need some help. You're not alone. You're not supposed to, just let us know what you need to do.
Okay, Pat, you have a minute? I just wanna uh talk to you.
Okay, thanks so much. Bye.
Take care.